County Regular Board of Commission meeting, February fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at four thirty P M. Commissioner Trainer, sir, would you lead us in the pleasure to lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, quick, what gate, if you would, uh, color roll, please.
Sure. Commissioner Lawrence?
Here.
Commissioner Savoy?
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Here.
Commissioner Trainer?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here.
Uh, additions, additions, deletions to the agenda?
A move that we accept.
Support and support to accept the, um, agenda as presented. Uh, next we have, oop, I'm sorry, all is a favor.
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes. Uh, next, uh, we can put organizational meeting on January third and the workshop together. I would take a motion to that effect.
So.
Pro. Support, motion and support to accept the organizational meeting, uh, minutes of January third, twenty twenty four, and the workshop, uh, meeting, uh, as presented at Tuesday's finance meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passed. Response for Steven Clark, that's clerk's office, page eight in your packet. Six, I believe.
Mr. Chair, I move that we acknowledge the correspondence and forward as appropriate.
Support, motion and support to accept correspondence as received and forwarded as needed. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes. Public comment. Anybody, you've come up here to the podium, sir? Or, oh, if you're comfortable there, as long as we can hear you, that's all that matters.
Um, I'm Rick Bernhard, I'm a trustee on the Kendrales Township Board. A few weeks ago, uh, Commissioner Trainer informed us that, uh, county had been contacted about municipal or what is material, uh, processing plan that's going to be replacing with the solid waste plan, basically. I had attended a meeting Eagle had in November on that in Totski, and I've been following it with regional planning since then to find out, uh, when the process was going to begin to form the committees and look into developing that plan. When I spoke with personnel at regional planning yesterday, they told me that it had to initiate at the county board level, uh, notifying the state that you intended to make a plan. And then the three counties need to get together to decide how the committee is going to be set up. I'd like to encourage you to get that notice of intent in as quickly as possible for a number of reasons. Uh, one, at this point, but a lot of the federal agencies are trying to determine how they're going to allocate, uh, this environmental money that's, uh, now going to be available. Some of which would probably be directed to the states to administer, others will go through in entities like the EPA. Uh, my contact at the EPA that I've dealt with relative to the, uh, project of the Ken Ross Waste Water Treatment Plant Co-Generation. Sent me information about a national, uh, draft, national strategy for food waste and, uh, organic recycling, about a period of public comment, which I submitted some for on behalf of the township. But that's going to be used to decide what different areas get funding grants or loans available. That's why I submitted something. The money that comes to the state could be also go out in grants. And from the experience I've had over the last forty years writing grant applications for the township, sometimes the state requires that you have an acceptable plan of some type in place to even qualify. I'd hate to see us lose out on the ability to apply for some grants because we hadn't gotten a, uh, plan in place. And since they're providing some funding to, uh, pick up the cost of developing that plan, I'd like to see the town, the county begin as soon as possible. If there's anything I can do to help with getting a, a plan in place, I'm happy to volunteer my time. Like it.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jay Cameron, I'm the Drummond Island Township Supervisor. Um, we had Commissioner Trainer down Monday night to discuss the, um, issues with hospice. And a lot of our residents are very concerned about the amount of tax dollars we're sending to up here and how it's being handled. And because we're so far away, just to make sure that we're getting representation down there as well as the immediate areas here, so. If we can, please keep us in mind. When making these decisions, we, our population since COVID has probably doubled. And it's continuing to grow constantly, so. It wasn't really on anybody's radar when COVID hit, everything changed, so. And I know hospice is a huge, huge issue, had to go through it with my parents, so, um, I understand the value in it. So if there's something that you can need from us, we're here to help, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have any more? Do, do we have anything?
Sorry.
Do we have anybody in Cyberland? No. We do not. Let's call. Once going twice. Republican comment closed, Ministers' Report, page nine. Minister of Church.
Sorry, all the regular monthly reports, uh, plus you have one for recycling as well as community action agency on senior services.
Next, um, old business, uh, Commissioner Savoy was not here, and we deadlocked on a, uh, on a candidate here. Uh, so we went ahead and, and tabled that on, uh, page twenty-eight in the packet. You will see the candidates, Jeffrey Barr, Richard Barnhart, uh, Tony Haller, and Brian Hannah. Wasn't one of these.
Tony, what, Tony wasn't playing it, so.
Okay, that's what I thought. So we have, uh, Mr. Barr, Mr. Banner, and Mr. Hannah. For this, he will call.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Brian Hannah, please.
All right, who's that?
Brian Hannah.
Commissioner Savoy?
Brian Hannah.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Oh, vote for Brian Hannah.
Commissioner Trainer?
Brian Hannah.
Chairman Martin?
Brian Hannah.
Yes.
That's what gave you unanimous support.
Congratulations, Mr. Hannah.
Thanks for serving.
Look forward to working with him through the E D C. Next, new business, resolutions, uh, twenty twenty-four oh-three, twenty twenty-four oh-four, twenty twenty-four oh-five.
Resolution A is, um, exactly what we were talking about in public comment.
A and B.
A and B, thank you. And, uh, yeah, this was brought to our attention from U P Planning and Development, uh, was it December or January? Forget it.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's, it's a good. Yeah, it's a good thing, and, uh, I would, uh, move that we approve, I think we need to do this separately because of resolutions. So I would move that we approve, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-four, uh, zero three.
Support, motion and support, roll call vote for resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh three.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Aye, or yes.
Commissioner Savoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Uh, roll call vote, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
Move.
Support and support, roll call vote, please.
Who's supported it? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Next resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five, for the citizens of local choice ballot initiative, so move. Motion. Support, support and discussion.
I would just, uh, mention that this is a ballot initiative, which is going to be hopefully appearing on, uh, the ballot for people to vote. And this would reverse the, uh, law that the, uh, legislature put in place that takes away county ability to, uh, regulate and zone, uh, and, you know, the property in the county. Uh, the, the legislature passed the law and it was signed last, passed a bill, it was signed into law that allows the administration through the Public Service Commission to basically override and ignore county wishes on zoning if it's in the name of, uh, renewable energy. And, uh, this would restore the county's ability to, uh, have appropriate zoning abilities for their local areas. So it's, it's an important ballot initiative.
Any other comment?
Yeah, this was brought to my attention by, uh, Representative Preston, um, and Ed McRum spoke on it at the last upcap. I mean, they're kind of, uh, trying to shepherd that through, at least for northern part of northern Michigan here. So, um, yeah, I just came highly recommended through that, those channels to me, so.
I'll simply add local government governance test. Great. Make the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Okay, next we have ten committee reports, Commissioner Trainer, or in this case Chairman Trainer. Give us a walk us through building the grounds, please.
Regard, meeting of the Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, Building Grounds, Jail Legislative Natural Resources and Information Technology Committee was held on Monday, February twelfth. Eddie, at U P Engineers and Architects Office in St. Mary, Michigan, called the meeting order at eleven A M with the forum present. Others present, Jeremy Gagnon, Mike Bitner, Kelly Church. Additions and deletions and approval of the agenda was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Savoy to approve the agenda as pre-pen, presented on a voice vote. The motion carried, nice and move. Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Public comments, none were offered. Agenda item, building grounds, Sheriff's Department stored, building bid tabulation and recommendation. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to approve the low bid of one million, two hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars from Arbit construction, which was recommended by U P Engineers and Architects. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and it's a move. Support.
Motion and support to accept the bid from Arbit construction. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just real quick, it was, uh, below, uh, estimates, so that's certainly welcomed. Um, and it was by, uh, Arbic, which we've had very positive experiences with, and is actually already working on the site doing the animal shelter work. So it really, this is really a good scenario for us, and, and of course, this project is greatly needed by the Sheriff's Office to, uh, be able to appropriately store all that research, search and rescue equipment and, and patrolling equipment like boats and snowmobiles.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Animal shelter update. No action was taken as the committee was updated on the progress of the finances of animal shelter addition and renovation. The windows went in last week on the addition, discussed the upcoming millage language for the best August ballot. Other, no action was taken on upcoming twenty twenty-four project, which will include adding a whisper room to the district courtroom. That will include electrical painting, carpet needs, committee updated on the fascia issue on the north end of the courthouse, which a piece appears to be rotten and fell off the building. This will need to be corrected prior to repainting and the circuit courtroom ceiling, then replacing and carpeting the circuit court too. These projects, you can keep the courtroom down for a minimum of two weeks, and we get everything done during the same timeframe. The committee also looked at a quote from Lumacrom, commercial clocks, to repair and update the clock on the courthouse. Meeting was established, was established for the beginning of March. From and, uh, committee. We'll have the flagpole get updated, some trees to be inspected, sprayed and trimmed, the courthouse exterior doors refinished and replace some chairs at the district court hallway. And I'd so move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass.
Committee and chairman's comments, no additional comments. Moved to, to adjourn by Commissioner Savoy, seconded by Commissioner Shackleton to adjourn the meeting on a voice vote, the motion was carried, nice and move.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass. Next, uh, Chairman Savoy, Finance Claims and Accounts.
The regular meeting of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, Finance Claims and Accounts Committee was held on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The, this location meeting was called to order at four thirty P M, a forum was pressed approval of the agenda moved by Commissioner Lawrence, ordered by Commissioner Trainer to approve the agenda as presented on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
We had, uh, comments and public comment section, we also received correspondence and information items. No action was necessary, we moved into the agenda item first was Health Department, Home Health and Hospice Program. And Health Department, Social Detriments of Health, the Hub Pilot Project. It was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to prove and set the Hub Pilot Program Fund of two hundred seventy-five thousand to be utilized before September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to address L, where the trees had, uh, foster healthier across the state of Michigan on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass.
Health Department Clinic Space Use Agreement at No Cost, moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize a clinic space with use agreement between Chippewa County Health Department and U P Superior Smiles, and voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for clinic space use agreement at no cost, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Health Department Medication Cart Purchase, moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize the medication cart purchase from Universal Medical on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for the Health Department Medication Cart, which does have a lock. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Health Department Human Resource Policy, Personal Cell Phones, Electronic Devices, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve the Human Resource Policy for cell phones, electronic devices, policy three point zero zero point zero one seven, as presented on voice vote, motion carried, I so move.
Support.
Motion and support for H R Policy three point zero 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 one seven. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass.
Uh, next was County Clerk, Election Inspection Workers, hourly rate, nine days of early voting, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to authorize fifteen dollars per hour plus mileage for the election inspection workers on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support, and just a side note, that money will be paid back to us from Lansing.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate, ha, thank, point well taken. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Next was Surveyor F Y twenty twenty-four Remonumentation Program. It's moved by Commissioner Shackleton, seconded by Commissioner Trainer to accept and authorize the completion report for grant year twenty twenty-three. The program representative administrator contract for Patricia Weinress, under the direct supervision of Robert Leighton, Chippewa County Surveyor, to approve two monumentation contracts for Alpine Engineering and Sedlock Group to monument twenty-five corners each to approve by professional service agreements for a few peer review surveyors, uh, Jeff Davis, Sedlock Group, William Carr, and retired Ginger McCloudsky slash Wallace, Alpine Engineering, Larry Rogers, Rogers Land Surveying, and Lawrence Weinress. On a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for the remonumentation, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Central Dispatch, uh, loose county service agreement, moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to authorize and prove the sixty-four thousand, five hundred thirty dollar renewal intergovernmental service agreement between county of Louise and Chippewa for emergency services as presented and updated on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support on Central Dispatch, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Central Dispatch lease renewal for the detour power, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize the tower sub, that detour location for five-year renewal lease with Chippewa County Central Dispatch on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Central Dispatch Title Three Certification, moved by Commissioner Lawrence, it's awarded by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize county certification of Title Three funds for F Y twenty twenty-three payment year as presented on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Support, motion and support. Any discussion?
Aye.
Yes.
Jumped the gun there.
All those in favor? Central Dispatch, Title Three Certification, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass.
Sheriff's Department Purchase of Transport Van was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove the purchase of the twenty twenty-three Ram full-size secure transport van from Auto Farm and ambulance sales and to waive the county purchasing policy on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for transportation, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
Again, Sheriff's Department Release, R F Q for two police pursuit vehicles, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove the request and quotations for two Dodge Durandal Police Pursuit Packages S U V. Uh, so presented on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Go ahead.
Motion and support for Kinder Angels, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Oh, Information System, Jaws Maintenance and Support, moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to prove and authorize annual Jaws Maintenance and Spark Agreement for ninety-first District Court, on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Information Systems, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to proceed with the L S S U project to revise an inventory system for equipment and supplies and to authorize the necessary signatures by Information Technology Specialist Anthony Zaki on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass.
M D O C Probation and Parole M O U, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove the M O U between Michigan Department of Corrections, Chippewa County for the use of multi-function device. This is a five-year M O U effective January twenty twenty-four till January twenty twenty-nine, on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support for M D O C Probation, Parole, M O U, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes.
Administration Otis Elevator, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to authorize Otis Elevator Company Maintenance Agreement to auto renew for five-year period on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Or, motion and support for Otis Elevator, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
Administrative opioid, opioid settlement monies. After extensive discussion, it was decided a workshop will be established so that the, the session with the a, area agencies, their needs and their needs and to hear their ideas for the use of these monies with the first payments being received in February twenty twenty-three. No action was necessary, moved on to Finance Claims and Accounts for January for the county and health department was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to recommend the approval of the January county bills and payroll, general claims, other fund claim, payroll, and health department claims and payroll. On a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support to pay the bills, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion pass.
Uh, there were no committee comments, there was no, uh, chairman comments, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to adjourn, the meeting was adjourned at five P M. And I would move for the acceptance and distribution as required.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys correct. That's a long. Ah, yes. Yeah, sir. Uh, Commissioner, report on meetings, is Verderp send us and general comments. For yours, gentlemen.
Um, regarding this, uh, opioid, um, workshop we may be having, if, um, if we have some ideas of, of, you know, that are sort of in the development area, I think we need, uh, a little bit of an outline and then, uh, at least a cursory investigation of whether it's an acceptable use of that money. If the health department has a possible use, you know, again, a little bit of an outline, and can we, can we spend it there, same thing with the sheriff's department for the jail. Uh, what would they do, how would they do it, and how much money, and is that an acceptable use? Um, I just like, right, and there's, you know, local agencies too that we are aware of that are requesting some money, so again, what would you do with it? Um, how much, and is it an acceptable use of, per the terms of the, the settlement? Um, I, if we're gonna have a meeting, I just hope it can be productive that we can, you know, really make some advancements in the issue. That's all for me.
Have a little on the hospice, just to keep that one rolling along, make sure that we cover everybody in the county. A private, a special meeting coming up on that one, the worked it out yet, or we're gonna do that one.
Well, that's in the works, I mean, I would guess we, we've talked about.
Right, right now with the. Right, right now with the MOU, neither party was at a point where they wanted to move forward because there's been some new agencies that have come in and there's been the issue with the legal with splitting the hospital and hospice. So right now, we are just sitting back and waiting for some answers and some new information from agencies that are potentially moving into the county and ones that are already here and what they will be taking on. There was a, there was an email in your packet that was, was sent out to the home health staff that explained that.
Yep, I read that one. I just want to make sure we're still plugging along and hopefully some of the people that are interested will move in and fill in the gaps.
Yep.
With. Back to, to the opioid, I'm sorry. I think someone else had mentioned this, that the city's getting like six hundred thousand too, it would just make sense for us to pool our money with the city. So we don't have redundancy or let's say we give organization A two hundred thousand dollars and organization B two hundred thousand dollars. And then the city said, well, we'll give organization A fifty thousand and we'll give organization B nothing. So to try to keep it fairer.
Maybe could coordinate a little bit.
Yeah.
The city to get the best paying out of money.
Yeah, I mean, anytime we can streamline it, but I don't think this is something that would be an issue.
I did ask.
County to work on, wouldn't it?
No, I don't see why, I mean, we would still be doing it independently, we would just be communicating. And there's certainly no problem with that and my, my perception. I did check with the mayor and I just asked him if he knew what they were going to be doing and he said, no, not yet. So, so they're kind of in the same boat we are. Um, yeah, I think that's, I think we should try to coordinate with them or at least be knowledgeable with, with each other doing.
And the opioid issue obviously is, I think we've all had experiences with hospice and they do wonderful work and we want to obviously make as many people as possible able to have access to that care. But we're waiting, it's hurry up and wait, we're waiting for legal and all kinds of things to go on and are soon as we can start moving forward with whatever direction we're going to go. We, we will do so, I promise, as quickly as we can. So we aren't leaving people hanging in the balance, whether they be patients or employees. So. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to say I'm constituents in my district, I'm still getting calls and emails and text messages just about home health and hospice and there's so many rumors going on out there. One thing, the Health Department Administrator Karen, because she sent out that press release the other day to try to you know, kill some of the rumors and, and it was a good article. Wanted thinker for that ultimately, you know, we're all trying to continue. We're, we're trying to make this program better in the future than we have now and something we can afford. And I think Commissioner Shackleton brought this up the other night, hopefully we, a year or two from now, we can say, you know what, we have better level of service now with other providers coming in. Because we, we can't lose one point two million dollars a year to fund, fund something. And I know Chad, the Drummond Island Supervisor brought it up. You know, they do send a lot of tax money out there and, but, but all the communities do. And we just have, we have services that we have to provide. Home health and hospice is something dearly to every one of us. But we, we're not mandated by law to provide it, we're the only county in Michigan that continued to do it for probably the last ten years. They've all gotten out of that service and, and we're, we're getting some interest outside vendors that are willing to do it. So hopefully, you know, things will settle down and in the, in the end, it'll be an improvement.
I just add to that, there's eighty three counties in the state of Michigan. Eighty two of them, which means every county except us has home health and hospice to varying degrees independent of the county. And that's the direction that we're going to be going. Every one of them has a health department providing the services as we will continue to. But there, someone's going to be doing home health and hospice other than the county. But that service is going to be available in the county, I have no doubt.
And as far as it hitting home, one of the reasons we don't have a date on the meeting is because at some point in the next three weeks, my mom's going to have heart surgery in Ann Arbor. And we're going to come back and there's no home healthcare. So don't think it doesn't hit all of us. Because it's going to hit me this month. We just don't know when. And you know, it'd be nice if we could speed it up so she could come home and we'd have home healthcare. But it just, we're going as fast as we can, I promise. And we, but we want to make sure we do this right. Because we don't get a second shot at it. And every, everybody has been very positive on the board. And the administrator and health department has been exceptional. They're trying to get us through this, we, we held on as long as we could, folks, we really did. And we just cannot afford it. Just can't. So.
Could I have one more part, Jim?
Yes, sir.
The biggest point that I keep getting hit on, they thought the health department was going to be gone altogether. I, we got to get that one straight, that it's not. Immunizations and all that will stay the same, it's only health, home health and hospice. Nothing else is going to be knocked out. We just got to get that point out so everybody knows we're still going to have the health department.
We could, we could, we couldn't eliminate those services if we wanted to, they're mandated by the state of Michigan for us to perform, to perform them. The, the, the personal family services, environmental health, the restaurant inspections, all those things. All those things will continue and just like, again, every other county in the state of Michigan, we will continue to provide those services.
It's getting to the people is the hard part.
Yeah.
I can only echo that, you know, that, to me, the health, the home health is a front burner issue, the, the opioid money is opioid money that we can spend now or we can spend it later. But I, I really see this, you know, that this is the number one issue is our own health, take care of those folks. Take care of our loved ones.
Any others? So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Motion support, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post.